Good evening and welcome back to night one of the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forums for the 2022 primary elections, which will be held on July 19th of 2022. These forums have been made possible by partnership between the Allegheny County Chamber, Allegheny Media, and WFWM. My name is Jeremy Irons and I am the Chairman of the Chamber's Legislative Committee. Thank you for joining us this evening. It is my pleasure to serve as moderator for tonight's forums. We are pleased to use technology to make these forums available virtually in addition to in-person. We are also able to offer live polls throughout the forum, which will be available on Facebook. Please feel free to participate. Our second forum of this evening is for Allegheny County Board of Education. Currently for Board of Education, there are seven candidates for, on the primary ballot, for three seats. With us tonight are David Bond, Bob Farrell, Janet Hevner, Lori Lepley, Megan Miller, All candidates will be given the same question and have the same amount of time to answer each question. We will be providing a 15-second notice as time is elapsing, and we will alternate which candidate answers first. Questions were formulated based on the work and priorities of the chamber with input from the general chamber membership and have not been shared with the candidates in advance. With that, we will go ahead and get started with our first question for Mr. Bond. Starting with an opening statement, please tell us about yourself and what qualifies you to serve as a member of the Allegheny County Board of Education.
First of all, Jeremy, thanks for having us and for putting on this event. I'm a product of the area. So I went to K-12 Mount Savage School. I've attended this institution, Frostburg State. I went away to school after that to grad school, came back. I've been practicing chiropractic here since 1988. I've been on the school board for the last four years, and I think we've done a great job, especially considering the stuff we've been through in the last two years. But there's a lot more to accomplish. As far as my educational interests, I raised six children in the county, and they've all came out all right, I guess is the best way of saying that. But I still teach. I teach online and I teach live at graduate level. And education's a big passion of mine, and I have enjoyed the time on the board, and I'd like to do a bit more before I hang up my political aspirations. So I appreciate your support.
Thank you. And I will just remind the candidates, if you could, if you could speak up for those in our audience. I know there's some trouble hearing in the back, so thank you. Bob, good.
Good evening, Jeremy. I appreciate it also for the chamber to step up and do this, and I think it's a great thing for the community. My name is Bob Farrell. I've lived in Allegheny County all my life. I'm a product of the county, and I was a Maryland State Trooper for 28 years in this county. When I left the state police, I was asked to write and teach a program at the Allegheny County Career Center Criminal Justice Program, which is still going on today. After that, I did security for the Board of Education. And I've been on the board now for four years. I was president my first year, and now I've served two years as vice president. We've gone through a very difficult time with the COVID and some of the things we've had to deal with. And I really, I love Allegheny County and I want to serve, so I appreciate anybody's support, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jeremy, and thanks to the chamber for coordinating this event. I'm Janet Hevner, and I moved here from Grafton, West Virginia with my family in 1962 when my dad was transferred with the railroad. I attended local public schools and graduated from Fort Hill in 1972, 50 years ago. So if you do the math, you know how old I am. I obtained my associate's degree here at ACM and a bachelor's in English from Frostburg. And I obtained my master's degree in public health from Colorado Health Sciences Center in Denver, where I moved with my husband Ron, also a Cumberland native, in 1984. My career has spanned from clinical laboratory to research, cancer research laboratory, and morphed into program management of epidemiologic studies in Denver, in Pittsburgh, and at Westat in Rockville, where I managed and implemented studies and trained staff in Kenya, Tanzania, and Uganda for a National Cancer Institute study of Burkitt lymphoma. Work took us away from Cumberland for several years, but the mountains lured us back in 2017 as we transitioned into retirement. We have two lovely young adult daughters who were also educated in public schools, mostly in Frederick County, Maryland, and they're now launching their own careers. I'm running for Board of Education because I've always loved school. I've loved learning. And besides my central career in epidemiology, I've worked as an assistant in the Science Learning Lab at HCC and substitute taught in elementary schools in Frederick County and also as a home and hospital teacher there. And I have volunteered as a literacy tutor through ACM's Adult Basic Education Program. And I think ACPS is in a unique position right now to move forward with great teachers and some innovative programs to catch up safely from the pandemic. And I believe that my background and enthusiasm contribute to accomplishing these goals safely in an environment of civility and common respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Lori Lepley, and I was raised in Cumberland, and I'm also a product of the public school system here. I went on to graduate from UNC Wilmington, achieving a Bachelor's of Science in Biology with minors in anthropology and chemistry. I own and operate Mountainside Appraisals, a real estate appraisal business serving Western Maryland for just over a decade. I've been a substitute teacher, a real estate agent, and an entrepreneur. I'm the mother of five children ranging in ages from 14 to three years old. And our oldest children started out in the local Montessori school for the first few years, until we chose to transition them to public schools. And we were happy and excited to see our children and how they blossomed in public school until COVID and all the accompanying restrictions hit. Like many parents, I pay close attention to each, or to the actions of the school board and their decisions throughout the pandemic. And each decision directly affected my family, and not always in a positive way. So the last couple of years have been trying at best. Also, like others, I've made a firm decision to get involved to ensure that other parents have a strong voice and an advocate in the Board of Education. I hope to be that advocate, and I will do my best to listen and make meaningful decisions to help our students, parents, and teachers of Allegheny County.
Thank you, Lori. Megan?
Hello. Hi, Jeremy. Thank you for having us. Pardon my nerves. I see my neighbors have prepared speeches, and I did not make one. I wanted my words to be more from my heart and my gut, so hopefully that does not backfire. So I will now start over. My name's Megan Miller, and I am running for Board of Ed because I'm passionate about education and learning, and I know firsthand what a good public education can do for a family and for a person. I am a product of Allegheny County, born and raised. I attended Head Start when I was wee little, and then Parkside and Crescent Town, Braddock, Allegheny. I mean, I'm a local person. I went on to graduate in '01 with Mr. Irons, and it was a good year. '83 was a good year to be born. After graduation, I went to ACM and then FSU. I have a degree in fine arts, a minor in art history, and then I went through the MAT program. I have 10 years' experience in public education. I've taught every grade from pre-K to college. I love learning, and I just, I can't say that enough. I also have 10 years' experience in the human service field with Friends Aware. And I know that with my real-world experiences and my home experiences, I have three little boys, I'm happily married, and a small business owner. So what I'm bringing to the table is a really good combination to help all students in Allegheny County. And I would just like to emphasize that, all students. So hopefully I do better. So I think that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you. Linda?
Hi, Jeremy. I'm Linda Widmire. I am a local, grew up in Bowling Green, blue-collar workers from the Kelly, PPG, the railroad. My dad was a sheriff's deputy. My mom was a seamstress. Graduated from Allegheny, Allegheny College, which was ACC at the time. I attended Frostburg and graduated with my bachelor's degree from Geneva College in Pennsylvania. I have spent more than 20 years with the public school system. I worked with at-risk kids on both the high school level and the middle school level. I also did some after-school programs with elementary school kids. I have a passion for education and for kids. I have many, many, many friends in the public school system who are teachers, support staff. I respect them. I respect the job they do. I'm excited to be part of the board because I see good things coming down the road, and I want to be part of that. I think we have some issues that are facing us at this time, and I think this is a good time for everyone to work together to achieve a common goal. And for me, the kids are number one. If it benefits the kids, I will be for it. And I'm willing and able to listen to people, the community, for their concerns, and I just look forward to serving people. Thanks.
Thank you. Our second question, and we'll start with Bob with this question, and just as a reminder to the candidates, these questions will be one minute each. So we've got a lot of candidates and a lot of ground to cover, so we're going to try to cover as many questions as we can. Starting with Bob, what current board policies and procedures do you take issue with and/or what current policies and procedures would you change, keeping in mind the parameters of this position?
Well, you know, one of the big jobs for the board is doing policies and procedures for, if you have been to any board meetings, you know that every, almost every month, we update or do policies and the associated procedures with them. I don't take issue with any of the policies right now. We have a very good policy committee in place with a lot of previous administrators and folks in the system and citizens, and I think that they're doing an excellent job. We have removed some policies that we thought were needed updated, and we have changed some policies to make them more, I guess, citizen-friendly or student-friendly and those type things. So I can't say that right now I take any issues with any of the policies or procedures. We have things in place to make those things work.
Thank you. Janet?
I would have to agree. And I'm not familiar with any policies that I, or procedures that I would take issue with at this time, and which ones would I change, I think would, I would just emphasize a focus on database decision-making in either implementing or continuing programs that may or may not be in the best, provide the best outcome for the students and for the teachers. And I would also like to focus on having teacher input into programs that are implemented because they're the ones that are on the front line that have to do the implementation. So I think it's really important to get their input. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
I would like to see it be a little bit easier for parents to speak at school boards rather than sign up ahead of time. It could be a little bit more casual, perhaps. And because sometimes issues come up if you attend a school board and you have a question or you have comments that you would like to make or concerns that you would like to express, it would be nice if there was maybe a 15- or 20-minute period at the end of the board meeting where parents could, you know, jump up on the microphone and quickly express what they want to at that time. And it might encourage more parent participation as well.
Thank you. Megan, same question?
I am going to reiterate what Mr. Farrell said and Janet. At this time, I currently do not take any issues with any policies or procedures. I would wonder, and I would ask myself, are all of the policies and procedures that are currently in place, are they what we need to attract high-quality and diverse teachers and leaders? And just kind of revisit those, because that is one of the points that I would like to focus on if my candidacy is successful, which I hope it is. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Linda?
I don't have any problems with any of the policies or procedures, but given what has gone on in our country with the school shootings, I would like to focus a lot more on safety. I know there's a great procedure and there's policies to address the safety of our students and our teachers and staff. A very wise man once told me that you measure twice and you cut once. So what I would like to do is go back, look at the policies and the procedures for the safety, see if there's somewhere we can twerk it and make it just better than what it already is.
Thank you. Dr. Bond?
So I've got a whole lot to add to this. I really, after being on the board for the last four years, we've been going over our policies and working diligently to update those to make them more relevant. Some hadn't been addressed for, you know, years, some up 10 years, they hadn't been touched or looked at. So we've been going through all those and making them current. There really aren't any policies at the moment that I would say need to change immediately, but I would echo what Linda said. I also would like to see more security issues looked at, and we've been working towards that. But there's a lot more we could do on the security side, and I think you're going to see that happening, at least if the board structure stays similar. So that's pretty much all I have to say on that.
Thank you, sir. Our third question, starting with Janet. Rising fuel and operating costs were a major concern as the FY23 operating budget was approved earlier this month. What concerns do you have regarding the current and future budgets, and what efforts would you make if elected?
That's a difficult, a difficult issue to solve, but I think maybe tweaking some of the, maybe some of the bus runs could be combined, and maybe changing some starting times and ending times for the school day could make less bus runs necessary. And other than that, I'm, I mean, I guess there are now procedures and technology available to have virtual teaching, but I don't think anyone would really vote or want to go back to that. But, you know, maybe, maybe on certain days or certain afternoons, that could happen. I'm not, or I'm really not sure what else you could do.
Thank you. Lori?
Not currently being on the board, I'm not really privy to the details of the budget. I have reviewed it and looked over everything, but what's available is just general budget lines. So it's really hard to know the details of any of that at this point, for me, anyway. But as far as the gas budget goes, I know that that was increased at the last school board meeting, I believe. And there is additional money that came from Blueprint Maryland, I believe, that increased funding by 6%. So there is additional money coming in that could address rising prices and inflation that we're currently seeing.
Thank you. Megan?
For the current and future budget, I would want to sit down with my colleagues and look through each line item and briefly discuss what we're looking at. I mean, you have to, you have to be able to pay your bills and get all the kids to school and get the report in on time. So without being privy to each line item and knowing exactly what is going where, even with a potential 6% increase in the money going in, I would not want to give a definite concrete answer until I could see, to see the beast. So you did mention gas prices, so in the future, when, when will ACPS, and it won't be this year, it won't be four years from now, but in the future, when will ACPS, two decades from now, will they make the jump to electric vehicles? Will we start utilizing solar more? I mean, I, there's so many ways that, wind turbines, I mean, there are ways to get ahead and to save money, but in order to do those things, you have to spend money, and that would be a conversation with all of the stakeholders.
That's one minute.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. We can save that thought for later. Linda?
Having experience with making budgets, keeping budgets, balancing budgets, I know there's always a little wiggle room. There's always a little bit of money in lines that you can move. One of the things I would look at, I would never change the bus schedules. They're long now. Some of the kids that are coming from Little Orleans, places like that, I wouldn't want them on a bus any longer than they had to be. There's always money for staff travel, staff training. There's a little bit of wiggle room in that budget, and I think as a board, we would make the decision of what is ultimately the most important things that influence our kids, and a long bus ride is not what I would want.
Thank you. Dr. Bond?
So from jumping back to the last forum, one of the delegate candidates from 1A had mentioned our decreasing population and our low per capita income. So that's something that we have to deal with on the board every, every year with the budget. And so we must get the maximum squeeze out of every dollar and make sure that that's going for the, for the best purpose for our students and for our staff and teachers. So with that being said, I think we've done a tremendous job with maintaining maintenance of effort. We haven't gone to the county and asked for more than what the state mandates as maintenance of effort. And the system, I think morale has improved, and things are running pretty smoothly. So with that said, there's really nothing on the, on the current budget. Of course, I'd be kind of saying, since I was part of putting that together. But it is, it is an important, probably the most important part of the yearly job of an elected board is looking at that budget.
Thank you. Bob?
I can only reiterate what David said. We have not, this county is not a rich county. We do not have, jobs have depleted. And one of the things going in that we said is we were going to hold the line on not asking the county for any more money than they were already putting out. We have done that for the last four years. We have stayed at maintenance of effort. And I know that all the board members have examined the budget. We've gone through all the, all the things line by line, at least I have. And if there was anything there that we could have removed or we could have tightened our belt on, I'm sure we would have. It's something that you really have to work on, and I think we've done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question, and this question will start with Lori. What are your thoughts about the effectiveness of mandating masks in schools throughout the pandemic? How do you think the Board of Ed might have handled its response differently, if you feel as such?
We have two years of data right now, and it's showing that masks are not effective, and especially children wearing masks and the types of masks that they wear. You know, this was new to everybody at the beginning, and there were definitely hard decisions that had to have been made, and I don't envy their position at all. But with the information that was available, I personally would not have voted for a mask mandate. And I was actually very vocal about that at school board meetings, and I think now we're seeing the negative effects from those masks. And we're seeing it in children with developmental issues, speech issues, socialization, and then also the anxiety that comes with that because it elevates you into a constant state of fear, seeing that all the time. How I would have handled it differently is when the special meeting was called right before school started, I would not have voted for the mask mandate.
That's one minute. Thank you. Megan?
The mask mandate, when, when the pandemic started, I was teaching in Washington County. I was commuting 70 minutes to a job that I loved, and I still miss it. I miss my school family still. I was a visual art educator that was forced to go to an online format in a extremely poor Title I school. Salem Avenue Elementary has even a two-classroom population for emotionally disturbed students, and it's, it's not the easiest place to love kids, but I loved it. It was my home. And going into the pandemic and having that heartache, I would have voted just how Deb Frank did. I would have. And I'm, I've agreed with her wholeheartedly, and I respect her, and I hope to fill her shoes. I really do. I want to look at the number, numbers, facts, and base my decisions off of that. My kids did-
That's one minute, Megan.
Okay, sorry. I want to talk to everybody.
Linda?
I think the board did what they had to do with the information we were given. It was new to all of us. We really didn't know. The CDC was telling us we had to mask up. We all did. Yes, it was detrimental to the kids in school. My firm belief is if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask by all means. That should be a parental decision. If you want your child to go to school with a mask, send them. If you don't want the mask, no masks. And that would be exactly what I would vote for.
Thank you. Dr. Bond?
So from, from early on, I was, I was not a mask fan, and I still am not for reasons like Ms. Lepley said. But we were under an unusual situation. The county health department was telling us masks were mandated. The state board of health was saying that. The state department of education, the governor's office, CDC, the feds, you know, all of that was all saying masks would have to be in place. One of the things I didn't know going into my first term on the board was that you can't act outside your elected office's position. If you do, you're personally responsible. So even if the board had said, you know, we're not going to wear masks, that would have been quickly overturned. It wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been upheld. But I was for getting the masks off as soon as possible, and as a board collectively, we did vote to remove the masks at the very earliest possibility, and that was when the county commissioners made that possible, so.
Thank you. Bob?
I, like David, I was not for the masks. I didn't want to see the children in the masks or the employees. We were faced with something- We were faced with something that we had never dealt with before, and we needed to make some serious decisions. But like David said, you can't do that. I mean, if you would go against the state board or against the state government, they would just remove you from office or take over the school system, and you would be left with nothing, you know, you wouldn't be able to do anything. So we had to go along with it. I can say that as soon as we were given the ability to take the masks off the children, we did. We voted, we took them off. I realized by talking to some local physicians and local medical people, I knew that it was just as harmful for them to be in there. They were getting bronchitis, they were getting strep throat, they were getting other things. So, you know, I was for taking them off as soon as we could get them off, and that's what we did.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, apparently, I'm of the very unpopular opinion that I think the masks should have stayed on, and I think they do make a difference, and I think that's proven by infectious disease experts. And, you know, having worked with those people in those professions in my career, I think the Board of Education might have handled it differently if they had voted with the county health officer who also recommended that the masks stay on. I realize that masks can be triggering to some special education students, and I think that's a special situation. But I think especially in a county where the vaccination rate was so low, that masking would have been the best way that we could have kept infections at a lower rate, and we did not do that.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Megan this time. A COVID-19 pandemic forced ACPS to address technology shortcomings. Do you believe that the technology is now in place to fully address this challenge in our rural community? What might you recommend in continuing to address the technology needs that will continue to change rapidly to ensure that we don't fall behind?
Currently, our needs are not being met. And, that was such a long question.
Sorry.
Do you believe that the technology that is now in place fully-
Do you believe our current needs are being met?
No, it does not. It absolutely does not. We have so many areas that do not have the capabilities to have their students in front of a broadband connection and educated virtually. I mean, so we need this fixed. And earlier, one of the candidates for 1A had mentioned that being an issue, and it absolutely is. With downtown, the redevelopment downtown, the new infrastructure going in, that will help some, but not in the areas where we need it. So that absolutely needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Linda?
I think once again, the board did what they could as soon as they could. So the technology at that time was the best they could do. There are areas that are without access to the internet, and I think that needs to be a continuing thing we have to do. I agree with the gentleman that we're here before. Internet needs to be a utility. It needs to be available to every person in this county. Now, do I want our kids to go back to virtual learning with technology? No, absolutely not. I want them in the classroom. But I would like to see us all, as a board, work with the utilities and with the delegation and our legislators to find a way that we can put technology through the entire county.
Thank you, Dr. Bond.
So I would agree that we don't have all the technology we need, but then again, it's really not, it's not the board's place to expand our broadband access. That's what's really needed. As someone else said there, the prior delegate forum, they mentioned the same thing, expanding broadband. The hotspots that we provided were spotty, they were faulty, they had difficulty staying connected, getting connected, that was a constant problem. But having better broadband would help things like snow days, possibly allowing kids to not miss school and not use up summer days, because if we had a particularly long stretch, we could do online education for those type of situations. But the biggest issue comes back to what I said earlier on, and that's a low population and funding. So without more money from downstate, from somewhere, we're not going to be able to expand our broadband to the way we need it so that all children have full access.
Thanks, sir. Bob?
Again, it's like we said, the school board has no say in expanding the internet or expanding the broadband. I got on the phone with numerous representatives, US representatives, state representatives, whenever this all went down, and we were trying to increase the Flintstone, Old Town, Mount Savage, Georgia's Creek area with internet access so the kids could do better, but there was very little we could do. Everybody promised you a lot, said, yeah, they were going to get on it, they were going to do a lot of things on it, but it didn't. I think that lately, some local entrepreneurs have stepped up to the plate, they've opened different sites. I'm one of the, I guess, lucky ones. I didn't have internet at my house till after COVID. I'm able to have it now by different things. I think the county has done to let folks on different towers. So it is moving forward, it's just not moving as fast as we want. But the Board of Ed can't do anything with it.
Thank you. Janet?
I would have to agree that although it's not within the purview of the Board of Education to provide that service, I think we could certainly advocate for it. So I think that's something that we could continue to do, like Mr. Farrell said he did. He, you know, he tried to get people to back it and to be behind it, and I think it absolutely should be a utility, and I think that we should pressure, either pressure our representatives and also advocate for community partnerships, as one of the candidates talked about. If it becomes not profitable for an ISP to get that broadband internet access to all the kids that need it, then maybe we need to partner with them to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Pretty much what everybody said here. There are issues in certain parts of the county where we don't have internet access, high-speed internet access. And advocating for it is the best, I think, that the Board of Education can do. But if we're just talking about technology in general, a few board meetings ago, when Mr. Brewer presented his expansion for the Career Center, it looks like they're investing a lot of money into some great technology out there that will help our students be ready for the job world once they graduate.
Thank you. Our next question, and we're going to start with Linda. What are your thoughts about health benefits made available to board members that are not available to part-time employees in the system?
I am concerned that there are paraprofessionals in our school system, many who do have bachelor's degrees, associate degrees, that are not paid a fair living wage. And in this day and age, we're finding out all kinds of diseases, all kinds of medical problems. I think health insurance should be available to all employees regardless of what part of the school system they work in.
Thank you. Dr. Bond?
I would say that the current plan that's available for our employees, it could be available tomorrow. I wasn't even aware of the bottom line. But I think the plan that's been in place has been there, it's about to be up for renewal, and I think that plan needs to be looked at, because I hear a lot of complaints from employees, but that was in place when I was elected. And when the term comes up, it's something that could be addressed and changed. So I guess that question's asking, you're asking about the benefits that are available to the board members, or are you talking about the teachers? You're talking about the board members, like us, the people? Oh, so I would say that the benefits that are available to board members as far as health benefits, I think a board member makes, I think it's like $4,600 a year. So your pay is about $4,600 a year. You spend a tremendous amount of time, and it's really a volunteer kind of, it's more of a volunteer kind of commitment, I would say, from when you break it down by the hour. It fills your tank up about two times for the year, as the current prices are going. So, yeah, I think that could be looked at so that part-time employees in the system do have access to healthcare, if that's what the question was saying, if that's what people are looking for. People need to come to our meetings and say these things, because we don't read the minds of the people that are out in the public. So if there are people in public that would like to see part-time employees have benefits, come and bring it up at a board meeting. Send it in, and we'll look at it, we'll discuss it.
Thank you. Bob?
I think folks need to understand that the Board of Education is self-funded in their insurance plan. In other words, we don't subscribe with different companies, and then they pay the whatever the medical bill is. What happens is, it's kind of a pass-through. The company that is doing the health insurance evaluates by our criteria what they will pay. There are certain things that they do pay and don't pay, and I'd really like to see that changed. I would really like to see this thing, you know, it's like David said, it's been since we've been on, that's where it is. I'd really like to see that bid out more and worked a little bit different way. As far as part-time employees getting insurance, I think I'm for that. There might not be a way that we can give them everything that, for example, a teacher or a full-time employee gets, but maybe we can give them something to help them a little bit to get through whatever they need. It might be, you know, just like when you buy a car insurance, it's a whole different ballgame.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm not aware of what the health benefits that are made available to the board members actually are, but I, I mean, obviously, part-time employees in the system definitely should have health benefits, so that's my 10-second answer.
Thank you. Lori?
I also had no idea that board members received any kind of health benefits, so this is news to me. But I would think that, you know, if board members could receive them, then part-time employees would be able to or should be able to as well. And with the increasing prices of healthcare, that's a really important aspect, and that would be something that should be looked into.
Thank you.
I would ask myself, what is best for the students? The students need the best staff possible, and if to get the best staff possible, we need to make health benefits available to part-time and to the IAs and the paras. Absolutely. I would want to try to figure that out, find a way to make it happen, and like Mr. Farrell said, if we need to renegotiate with companies and find another option, then so be it. I mean, it's going to take work, but everything takes work. And the other thing with that, employees do not get paid during the summer. That's another thing that I would like to talk about if elected.
Moving on, and our next question to Dr. Bond. Safety and insecurity in schools has once again come to the forefront at the national level. Do you believe that our schools and transportation in ACPCS are safe from a persons or persons gaining access and harming students and faculty? Please offer how you might maintain or increase safety measures.
So I was just talking about this about two weeks ago with the superintendent and with Bob, at different times. But anyway, I would like to, one of the things that I've noticed as a board member is access to our schools. Yes, they're secure, but at different occasions, I've walked up, pushed the buzzer, and I'm just buzzed in. And, you know, you have to go to the office and sign in, but you're still buzzed in, and there's no question on the thing, who are you, what are you here for, whatever. I would like to see something like, my best example would be, the idea for me came from First Peoples. When you go through and you get a teller that's in Cumberland, why can't we hire two or three people that their job is to just access people in and out of the building? So when you push the button, your face comes up, it pops up on a screen at our central office, they ask you a question, what are you here for, and then you go. So there are things we could do to maintain or increase our safety measures. Another thing would be adding more security officers and resource officers into our schools. So, and just quickly, I'd like to say one more thing about the last question. I didn't even think about it till it got around. But anyway, board members are offered insurance, but they have to pay for it. So if you want the health insurance, it comes out of the $4,800. And in fact, the first two years on the board, when my children were still in college, I had to pay $28 a pay. So it took all of the money that I got for on the board, plus I paid $28 a pay out of my own pocket to have insurance, so I was paying $28 to be on the board. So just so you know, it's not a big benefit thing for, anyway, I'm done.
Thank you. Bob?
I guess this is my wheelhouse. I mean, I put a lot of the systems in the schools that do safety and security. You can always put those things in, and you hope that they go the way they're supposed to. And I agree with David, and when he talked to me about it, there is questions that are supposed to be asked by two people coming into the school by the secretary or whoever is letting them in. Some schools have security officers letting them in, some people, it's office personnel, they're different, but there's questions, there's a list of questions they're supposed to ask. And I think what happens is, we're a small community. We know the folks, we know if it's, you know, Tommy's mom bringing his lunch, or what it is that's going on. So I think that that's what's occurring. I think that our schools are very safe. You know, we have door access, we put more stuff in Braddock, Washington, Ford Hill, there's a lot of things we've done, and we're increasing the security officers and resource officers. So I think we're doing well.
Thank you. Sevner?
I would think that it would be prudent to reexamine what the, what safety measures are in place, and to see how, look at what's been proven to be effective, and I think that sounds like a good idea that Dr. Bond mentioned of having the face come up, having those questions asked, and to periodically and randomly, you know, assess whether that's being done at all the schools to make sure that we keep the students safe in school. And so I think if those, if those safety measures were enforced 100% of the time, then we could maintain or increase what's in place. Thank you.
I'm not familiar with the different security protocols at the schools, but with my experience with my children in school, it seemed pretty secure. You couldn't just walk into a school. But, you know, everything should be audited as far as safety, and professionals should be consulted, and the newest and best, the technology and procedures that keep her kid safe should be utilized if possible.
Thank you. Megan?
I, my children go to Parkside, and it was mentioned previously, we are a wonderful, small, knit community, and it is so easy just to buzz people in. But I think slowing down and just your due diligence, that is what needs to happen. Having cameras on every door, and that needs to be maintained and looked at by the person in the office. The other thing that I would like to bring up concerning school safety, some of the schools in the county, you walk in and it's wide open. So maybe if the community members would want it, and if we decide to fund that in the future, another option would be like a vestibule and having it blocked off and another layer of security. But with that comes a price tag, and we need to discuss that. But definitely with the cameras at the doors.
Thank you. Linda?
I think I addressed the safety issue when I brought it up, when we were talking about procedures. The person who is usually buzz- about procedures. The person who is usually buzzing those people into the building are the school secretaries. Like, they don't have enough work to do, that they have to worry about getting people in. And I have been there. I've seen the hooded people who come to the door and want in, and they won't remove their hoods. The presence of the school resource officer, I feel, is very important. I think that presence to be seen, and if people come to the door that aren't supposed to be there, if they see that uniform somewhere around, they may think twice. The other thing, I know for a fact, we have problems at the alternative school in Eckert. And not only do we have to worry about somebody else coming in and harming our kids, there are kids we have to worry about who could harm the police officers and teachers and other students. And that would be my priority for safety.
Thank you. Next question, and we'll start with you, Bob. The mental health of students was a major concern in 2021, or in 2020 and 2021, and is ongoing as we consider, consider mental recovery from the pandemic. What, if anything more can be done to ensure this barrier to education is lifted for our students?
I think we realized that, and previous to this, we added social psychologists, and we've added more counselors to the schools. We are trying to combat two things. One is the safety and security aspect with that, but also the aspect of what kids have gone through with the COVID. It was very, I think, hard on the students to have the masks on, to go through, not being with their friends at school. That was a very, very, very tough thing. And I think by adding the social psychologists, the school counselors, you know, we have up them in each school, I think, this year, so that we have more there available for the children. I know in Washington and Braddock, they're getting an extra counselor. I think some of the other elementary schools are getting an extra counselor. So I think that's going to be helpful in the mental recovery for kids. I mean, kids have a tough time with that. It's different. Thank you.
Janet?
Yeah, I agree that the social isolation was very difficult on students, and parents, and teachers. So I think maybe we need to consider group therapy for teachers, you know, who had to put in extra hours and learn new technologies, and deal with their own children at home, and also teach virtually. I think it's not just a student issue. I think it's, I think it's society-wide. And so I think that's, you know, I think it's a really great thing that there are more counselors available in the school, and more guidance counselors. But I think we need to be aware that we're all suffering as a community.
Thank you. Lori?
The added guidance counselors and psychologists is definitely a great start, and it's what the kids probably need at this point. And parents also have to be aware, too. And it's going to take parents and teachers communicating, and, but mainly parents. The teachers have 30-some students to deal with. Parents have their own children. But just better communication so that we can kind of keep checks and balances on each other. And, you know, when a teacher, another student, another parent sees somebody that is suffering, make somebody aware of it. Make their parents aware of it, a principal, a guidance counselor.
Thank you. Megan?
To ensure that our students have what they need, last year there was funding. I remember, I remember Deb from the audience at the Career Center yelled out seven, it was seven licensed counselors that was added. So on top of that, I would also like to talk about trauma-informed training. That is so important. To give the teachers and the staff the toolbox to work with people that have gone through trauma. And when you're young, you don't know how to process that. And also, another thing to consider, ACE scores. If you're not familiar with what an ACE score is, I would like for you to look that up. That's your homework. And there are so many things. I would love to talk about this subject and this topic at great length, but I will be quiet now.
Thank you.
I think the school system has done an excellent job adding the extra professionals, the guidance counselors, making them aware that they all know the kids are going to have lots of problems from this pandemic. When I was in the school system, I used to say, you know what, there are professionals that can do this. And I think our teachers that really and truly care about our kids are very in tune to the kids' behaviors and things that have changed with them. And that's what our guidance counselors are for. That's what our social workers are for. That's what the school nurse is for. I think the teachers get enough training in a school year, but I think what is in place right now can always be improved. But I feel that what they've done in the past year has been great.
Thank you. Dr. Bond?
So we did add seven mental health professionals to help with that, and that's on top of the ones that were already there. Our PPWs, our personal, pupil personnel workers have been doing a good job going into the homes and looking for kids. Home environment's a big thing. That's a hard thing to control from a school system. How do you get, you know, to make sure students are showing up when they're not showing up for school? Are they getting out of bed? Are they doing their homework? If the kid's home and he's hungry, you know, he's wearing, or she's wearing the same clothes all week without a breakfast or a meal? Are they getting food at the school? Is the food at the school suitable for the student? They're all things that become important in that mental health. If a kid's hungry and, you know, nobody pays any attention to him at home, he's going to act out. That's just how it's going to be. So the school system can do a lot, but we can't fix the problem. It's something that's a community problem, and it's going to take everybody's input to solve some of the situations that are causing our mental health problems with our students, in my view.
Thank you. And our final question of the evening is a closing statement. Each of you will be given two minutes to make your closing remarks, and starting with you, Janet.
Okay, then. Thank you again for the opportunity to be a part of the forum. I remain excited about learning and the opportunities that lie ahead for Allegheny County Public Schools. I think they're doing a lot of good things, and I think there's an opportunity for them to do even more good things. And I just am thrilled at the prospect of being a part of that bright future. And I feel like I'm well-positioned to be a part of it, and I would greatly appreciate your vote. Thank you.
One of the motivations for me to become a member of the Board of Education is to be a voice for the parents, teachers, and students of Allegheny County. And throughout the last two years, it has been increasingly frustrating for me to sit in the sidelines and allow important decisions to be made with very little public input. I believe that we need to focus our attention on making our schools better and more accessible than they have been. We need to learn from the past and not repeat the mistakes that we've already made, and our students deserve better from all of us. I believe we're entering into a critical time where we cannot allow our children to be guinea pigs in social experiments. The time is ripe for us to get back to solid learning, accessible and safe schools, and prepare our children for competition on a global level. Parents and teachers need a strong voice. They need a representative who will not merely rubber-stamp decisions and bend outside influen, or excuse me, bend to outside influences that may not have the best interests of our children at the forefront of their agenda. And with your support, I hope to be part of the success of Allegheny County Public Schools.
Thank you. Megan?
Hello, and goodbye. My name's Megan, and I would love your vote for Allegheny County Board of Ed. The things I'd like to leave you with, my experience in the classroom at all grade levels, my love for my community and my family. I have kids in the system. I want my children and your children to be successful. I am a Cumberland success story, and I want your family to also be a Cumberland, or I'm sorry, not Cumberland, Allegheny County success story. Please forgive me. Learning loss recovery, attracting quality teachers, growing and expanding our career pathways, and having a serious conversation about mental health. There are many things that I can do to be a valuable part of the board.
I've always had a passion for working with kids. I loved my time at the school system with the teachers, the interactions, the kids. I love the kids. I still see a lot of them. I served on an advisory team that met at Johns Hopkins every other month. I did that for six years. I found out that the problems we have are often the same problems in the city, and I think we have the opportunity to come together and solve some of our own problems in our county. I'm happy with what the board is doing. I think they've come a long, long way, and I would just be excited to be part of the board, to take us into the next problem that we're going to have, because you know it's always there around the corner. I also am anxious to work with the board on the social issues that are coming up, that are facing our teachers and our parents and our kids. I think we need to make a stand. We have to stand up and stop being the silent majority, the silent minority, whatever we are. We have to start making a stand for what's right for our kids and what's best for our kids. I have four kids. They're all grown now. They were public school system kids. They had a very active school experience. They're very successful. And so I truly believe in this system. I've walked the walk. I've been there with the teachers. I've been there with the students. I've been there with the community partners. And I would like to be on the board to expand on what we can do. I tell everybody, my maiden name was an A, and my married name is a W. So I went from the top of the rung to the bottom. So when you're ready to vote, please go all the way to the bottom, and don't just pick the first three. Pick the last one. I would appreciate your vote. Thanks, Jeremy, for having us.
So I just jotted down a couple of things in the four years that I've been on the board that's happened. Our budget, like I said, has been at maintenance of effort for the past four years. Our relationship with the county commissioners has been great. We've got a local superintendent who I think is doing a great job. Our audits have been on time. Just for 2022, we've done three projects completely funded. The Ford Hill visitor-side stadium rebuild, Allegheny's Field House, Mountain Ridge weight room. We've increased security in school. We've added an early childhood site up in, at Westmar. We've increased mental health counselors for our schools. This year, we had the second student graduate in our PTEC program, holding a certificate, a graduation diploma, and a two-year degree from this institution, from AC. We have more next year. Our Career Center enrollment's increased. Our AG program is up and running again. It had been closed for several years, doing well. More kids this year in it. Four years, no real issues with teachers or, you know, the CRT stuff. Cache Valley and Braddock, I believe it's Braddock, have been awarded Blue Ribbon status. We've had the biggest budget surplus ever in our school system. Our teachers have received two pay raises, a bonus to all of our employees, a 300 bonus to contracted employees. We've raised our substitute rate of pay, and we've given health nurses a raise with the cooperation of the Health Department. So overall, I think we're moving in a great direction, and that's one of the reasons I'm running again. I want to see more of that continue. So if that's the stuff you want, vote for me. I would love to have your vote. And if you have questions, you can contact me at my office, or on the web, or Facebook, or any of those things. I'll be happy to talk to you. Thanks.
Thank you. Bob?
There's not much I can add to what David just said. We did all that. And, you know, one of the big accomplishments, I think, that was very good for the system is having a local superintendent during the COVID pandemic, because we were, he was able to work well with the Health Department, work well with local folks. They all knew each other and worked well together. Again, you know, I've spent four years on the board. I think I've done a pretty good job. All the stuff David said, I'd like to be reelected. I'd appreciate your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you for taking time out of your day to join us here this evening. We wish you all the best of luck moving forward. From a Chambers perspective, thank you very much to Ryan and Katie Brenneman at Allegheny Media. They provide our video services for tonight, and also to Chuck Dickin at WFWM for their partnership, and for ACM for hosting this event in their building. Early voting will begin on July 7, and will run through July 14. Election Day is on July 19. You can find all this information at elections.maryland.gov. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us this evening, and also, this broadcast will be available on the Chambers Facebook page, and it'll be available throughout the election and throughout the general election. And also, WFWM will be rebroadcasting this forum. The previous forum that you all saw, District 1A, will be broadcast on Tuesday, July 12. And this forum, the Board of Ed forum, will be broadcast on Wednesday, July 6, and both of those times are 6:00 p.m. And again, I'd like to thank the candidates. We will now be moving over to our City of, to our City of Cumberland City Council forum. We'll be taking about a 15-minute break, and then we'll be back with City Council. So thank you all.